All right, we will call a meeting to order, seven oh eight. Uh, roll call. Counselor wanted me.
President.
Counselor Ortiz.
President.
Um, citizen member Gil Provo.
Present.
Counselor Vivas, present.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to, um, make a motion to suspend the rules to add Agenda Item Two A. Review and discuss the appointment of Gil Provo to the Education Human Services Subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through June thirty first, twenty twenty four. Pending completion of state ethics, entertain a motion to recommend Town Council approve this appointment.
Second.
And that requires a two-thirds vote, and it has no amendment or debate.
Okay, open for discussion?
Well, I mean, like I said, Robert's rule says it has no amendment or debate. It's to put it on the agenda. It's not to vote on it. It's to, to place it as an item. It requires a two-thirds vote.
So there's no discussion?
On adding it to the, suspending the rules to add something to the agenda. Once it gets added, you can have discussion about it.
Okay. All right, um, so you made a motion to suspend the rules?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of suspending the votes? Okay.
Is your vote?
No.
No, okay. So that is Two A.
Two A, okay. Would you like to read your?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I could have discussion on it if you'd like. Um, I can speak directly to the last meeting where this was brought up. I don't think you were here. Uh, this was brought up at the last meeting about Martinez Shea not being on, even though there were already two members. And, um, I don't want to say they made me, but I, we decided that it would be more appropriate at the last meeting that we moved motion to suspend the rules and we added Martinez Shea. And, um, it happened to be after Mr. Kelly and Ms. Clemmons, and then we tabled it indefinitely. Um, but they, the Counselor Dow, Ms. Clemmons, and Counselor Marquetti thought it was appropriate to, to add that to the agenda for Martina. And, um, on that fact alone, um, I feel it's appropriate to add this here as well.
Any other discussion?
Just a quick moment. Uh, in listening to Denise Clements, she brought some history back of that all names should go to the Subcommittee. And that's why the intent of waiting the rules to add all the names, if there are any other names, to add them. So I think maybe we moved so fast that we didn't have that particular bylaw that she was talking about where all names should go to Subcommittee. So what we're doing is we're trying to correct them at Subcommittee by adding all the names and then vote on the names that, that will put it. Thank you. I'd like to thank Denise Clements on that.
Gus?
Okay, I would think that, that to some degree that makes sense, but if we could do it that way, the children would see the agenda, I don't think. And that way, that way, that way it'd be fair and everybody, the people who are going would be able to announce the two members of the name together, rather than having to be stacked essentially in a way where whoever happens to go first is a good one. Of course, we have the other meeting I walked in after that, so it shouldn't have been done that way then too.
Anyone else?
Are you saying that you want all three names put on one agenda item?
Yeah, oh, what I was just, it's kind of, kind of like when you, when you have multiple choice, you can have, I understand in several cases, it varies over time, but where you would have people that you, you would have all three of them, and you could simply say, I want A and B, or I want A and C, or I want B and C.
I, I.
And then, and then you basically tally how votes work.
I thought.
So A gets two, and B gets one, and C gets two, or whatever.
I thought council stopped the grouping of names, like, couple, three years ago, four years ago, I think, I recall. They didn't want grouping of names, and they didn't want grouping of names, even as, you know, you, when it came for, uh, reappointments, July first, you did all the reappointments. I think John was chairman of the council, and they wanted to group all the names together, and council voted no individually. Am I, am I correct?
Yeah.
All right, you answered my question.
Counselor Dow, anyone else? Counselor Marquetti?
Uh, I'm just about to ask Gil, would you want to be on this?
Yes, I do.
How come? How come you want to be on this committee?
Just want to serve my town. Proud to do it.
I just think, I guess I can respect precedent from before, but I think it discourages different perspectives and different people that can offer something when all of these names are sort of submitted all at the same time, and you don't give other citizens an opportunity, um, to even be interested, um, that might be able to participate in a different way and have different perspectives, whether it's someone, um, that is involved in education, or was in education, or someone that, um, you know, is involved in healthcare, um, you know, putting all these names all at once and not having any choice, um, that prevents others from, you know, from even learning about the process because the committees are stacked right away. So that's just my two cents on it. Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I don't know why we can't bring in games and play games and old boys, and this is what it is. The gentleman on the board, you know, he put his paper in, it should be heard, should be, uh, vote on him as well, like everybody else. He, it's, it's, he's a citizen, he lives in South Bridge. I'm not sure why we keep calling games and stuff like that. Just now, uh, we never say that before. I mean, what changed now? Why now you feel like everything is game? Like, it's not, I, I, I don't appreciate every time you want to speak, you say either old guy or boy, or, or games. That's not proper. I don't think as a chair and councilor of the town, uh, call every evening games, and I don't think that's proper. Thank you.
I haven't said that besides for the town manager's appointment, but, um, yes, he is interested and he is a citizen. But I recall in previous, um, subcommittees where appointments were held for, for interest to see if other residents who had different qualifications, that has happened in the past. And that is all that I was doing, waiting to have more people apply who were interested, who have approached me and asked about being on the Subcommittee. That is all, but if that isn't the wish of the Subcommittee, then that's why, Gus, and then Counselor Loza.
The tradition when the Subcommittee citizens come actually end, end of July, they're purposely staggered so that they would have that extra time, that extra time, the council getting ready and the Subcommittee. Uh, if you could even mention the setup.
Just make one quick comment.
Well, Counselor Loza.
Just a quick comment. Anybody can apply.
Yes.
And they put their name in, they go to the town manager's office, and then the chairman of the council, or the chairman of the Subcommittee, we put the names on there. We were not, we were moving pretty quick because a lot of people wanted to be on. I also went out and outreach to different people, uh, like, um, Ms. Torres, and, and thought that, you know, here's somebody that wants to get involved, you ran, and unsuccessfully, but that doesn't mean you don't want Ms. Torres to get involved. So to me, as an experienced elected official, we always extended the hand to come on in, let's, let's get under the same tent. So, but, fifty people applied. Fifty people would be on the agenda, and then you would vet, I'm exaggerating fifty, you're lucky if you get to a three, but you, you vet them as a Subcommittee. And that was the intent of the job, to Subcommittee will take care of that, and then it will go up to full council. So, in the process, I didn't create the process, but I'm excited. We had some people apply for the cable TV. Cable TV had been empty. I remember last year, we had twenty-one volunteers in the town manager's saddle for six months. Council found out about it, and all of a sudden we had one lead that, everybody appointed. We've got a lot of volunteers that want to get involved. Step up, go in, pull an application, put it in, the process is there, and it will bring you to Subcommittee, and then after, you can vote your conscience as a Subcommittee, and then we'll vote our conscience as a council. Thank you. It's very simple.
The only thing that, that wasn't my experience last year, when I recommended to a lot of people to apply, and they did, I never saw them on, on an agenda for a Subcommittee. So, it's a different process now that we're in a new year. I don't understand what changed from last year to this year, because all of the people that filled out applications were not on the agenda for EHS last year, were not on the agenda for, um, the Commission on Disabilities, people that had come to my table at National Night Out or come to.
And that was the town manager that did that.
Again, if the process is different every year.
The process never changed, the town manager did.
May I step to the sergeant, please?
Just, just a matter of maybe clarification, I think. I put my name in last year for the Board of Health. On a Thursday night or a Friday night, council, I mean, town manager would call, interviewed me on the phone. I was on the phone with him for over two hours about the interview. Told me I had the position. On Monday morning, he called me and said there was a better candidate that had mental health background. He explained the whole situation to me, and I told him, I says, if it's a person better than me, that can bring more information to the Board of Health, go ahead and do it. So that person was brought forward to the Subcommittee. My name wasn't there, you know, and I was kind of disappointed because I felt that at least the Subcommittee had the, the choice to pick the two people. Uh, but it was, it was decided upon by somebody that my name shouldn't go up on the, the agenda. And they did pick a, a very good candidate, you know, so I hadn't, I had no problem with that. But that was the process acting.
Thank you.
Just a, a point of clarification, if all the discussion is done, this is Agenda Item Two A. Review and discuss the appointment of Gil Provost to EHS Subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through July thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Is that a motion?
It, it's, I'm just clarifying that that is, that is the motion on the floor at this time, since it's not written down. I just wanted to, because like, passing my case, I would get a little lost. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes three to one. Item three, review and discuss the appointment of Maria Torres to the Education and Human Services Subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through July thirty first, twenty twenty four, pending completion of state ethics. Entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council approval, approve this appointment.
So, second.
Any discussion? Counselor Loza?
I would just like to say I commend Maria Torres for staying on the playing field in the town of South Bridge, and to serve this community in its capacity, and hopefully we'll see her in the future on the rolls. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just like I asked Maria, why she wants to serve.
She's right there, Bonnie.
Uh, so basically, I do budgets up right now for property management. So I do have experience in the quarterly budgets, I have experience with the place structures, I have, I'm also a parent, and I'm involved in all of these programs that are here to offer, like, you know, cops and kids, and, uh, basketball boot camp, and I have experience also creating nonprofit programs as well for the community. And, you know, I have a lot to offer, I have a lot of background, I work with the Board of Health right now, and I also, you know, just, I have the experience. So I would like the opportunity to serve the community, bring my expertise to the table, to be able to provide, you know, a good year moving forward, and again, part of the team, I think, uh, I'm a very keen individual.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Chair, for you. Thank you for moving forward, and, uh, you have all our support.
Anyone else? Any other discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Item two, item four. Review and discuss the town manager's appointment of George Steves to the Board of Health for a three-year term effective immediately through June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. State ethics in good standing. Entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council for approval.
So, sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Um, I think it's great to see Gus, uh, putting his name in for anything very soon, and, uh, I, I do know that you, uh, you know, care a lot about health issues of whether it be people or anything else that involves health, so.
Well, I figure it's, it's an issue. Like, I, as you know, as you guys have seen the last ninety years, I was, I'm very interested in environmental issues, like, I see a, a need to kind of take a look at the way our community is, is doing things in terms of how we can tie environmental, understanding our environment and what's going on, add that into our communities' preparedness and health. And, um, I just think it's a, you know, I also have a background in mental health. My resume should be.
It is.
So I have, I have done some work in the mental health field. I was in the wrong spot, one of them being here in South Bridge. Um, and, you know, I just got a broad variety of interests, but then I think I can, that I think makes me a good generalist to be on the Board of Health, where many of the other people on the Board of Health are kind of specialists in this area, which is, which is very important to me, that, that could fly, that could balance a generalist specialist. That's kind of what I'm.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Unanimous. Item five, review and discuss the town manager's appointment of Nicholas Dada to the Board of Health for a three-year term effective immediately through June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. State ethics in good standing. Entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council for approval.
So, sorry.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, through, I just think this is great too. Another candidate who's been involved in the local Town Council election, that still wants to be involved. And he's a very talented and skilled DMT, uh, among other things, so, uh, it's great to see his name appear here. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, yeah, I did a call from when I knew, when you were in the Council, I think he would be a good, uh, Board of Health member as well, because of the fact that he's got a fire department background. He's got a lot of kind of emergency planning background. I was kind of just referring to him, too. So, I think it would be a good, a good mix of kind of putting him on the board as well.
Thank you.
I'd say he might have been here tonight, but he did have a call, he, he had untried Delmi, so he might have been here, might have been here. But, if you look at his resume, it was probably the most impressive resume that I've seen of any volunteer in a long, long time. It's, 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 his background in emergency services and health is, is, is something that's going to be, uh, well worth having him on the board. And I, I think in the future, he's going to be an asset to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous for present? Item number six. Review and discuss the town manager's reappointment of Nicole Duffy to the Board of Health for a three-year term effective immediately through June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. State ethics in good standing. Entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council for approval.
So, sorry.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'm just, uh, wanted to comment on, I see that there says reappointment, and the next item says appointment. Why is it on here twice?
There was a confusion as to whether the reappointment, um, was in effect, and so Ms. Duffy applied, um, for her reappointment, and also turned in an application, as she was told that they weren't sure if her reappointment had expired. So, that's why it's on here twice.
Any discussion? Any further discussion? Counselor Marquetti?
So, at the previous EHS Subcommittee, we voted to postpone this idea. So her appointment, her, hers is a reappointment.
And this item is a reappointment.
It's a reappointment. If it fails, you can reconsider it, or you can bring it up at a future meeting. I think to put it on here twice is probably not in order.
Well, the second one is an appointment.
It's out of order, in my opinion. That's just my opinion. Second of all, the reason that I postponed it is because I had some concerns about our own local Board of Health, what's going on with our local Board of Health. I mean, if you look at some of the duties of local boards of health in Massachusetts, and I don't see a lot of these things coming before the Board of Health, and resident, the agenda is just very light, it just seems to be on mental health and mental health only. I've been to meetings where they spent forty-five minutes on mental health, and maybe five minutes on light, a lot of joking going on about the light. And, in addition to that, our own bylaws, section three dash two oh nine, on health. The Board shall also establish and enforce standards to protect the public health regard to refuse collection in its local, in the town. And from what I understand, uh, Ms. Duffy does not want to talk about trash, and yet that's in our bylaws. They must talk about trash. When I looked at some of the previous agendas, and I only went back to January, COVID light mental health housing, February, COVID light mental health tobacco permits opioid arm up. March twenty-third, it was a cut and paste, same thing. April twentieth, cut and paste, same thing. May eleventh, cut and paste, the same exact agenda. Then June ninth came, June eighth was canceled, and there was really no agenda at all. It's, it lacked specifics, as do many of the agendas on the Board of Health. Uh, June ninth, it was just one agenda, asking why the health director did not perform a Board of Health of tick control. And I didn't think that that was really necessary to put that on as an agenda item. Possibly, I would agree, the health director should have said something to the Board of Health about that issue, but not something that needed to be on the agenda. It was just very argumentative back and forth. Uh, I went back in twenty twenty-two, I didn't look at them all, but I looked at several of them. There was a big, big discussion about Autumn Fest. I'm not sure that's a Board of Health issue. When, when Ms. Irene Condon came to a meeting, she tried to talk about Bejutro, and was interrupted three times in order for them to have a public hearing. And then she would come back and talk, and then they would have another public hearing. So she had to stop, and then she came back again. So I just look at the way the Board of Health meetings are being run, and I don't really agree with the way the chairperson of the Board of Health has been running them. Uh, most, like I said, mostly mental health. Maybe mental health is a Board of Health issue. When I look at the state's information about duties of the local Board of Health, I really don't see a specific, mental health should be the only thing to talk about. So that's why I asked to postpone it and get more information about Ms. Duffy, and that's why, uh, that's why it's here again. Thank you.
Ms. Duffy?
I'd just address that, that, um, I'm just curious, though, um, you know, that those seem like a lot of opinions, um, that, that seems like, and even if those are concerns, I'm just wondering why they're just kind of like, kind of put in a pile and, and as a reason for postponing.
Well, I'll answer that. When you postpone something according to Robert's rules, you can only discuss the reason why you want to postpone it. You really can't discuss the merits of the main motion. So that's why I did not bring up all these things about my concern about Ms. Duffy. We only talked, we postponed it, and that's all you can talk about. So now I am bringing these issues up now, now that she's made up for reappointment. Thank you.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Uh, I, I won't be supporting this tonight, uh, based on what Counselor Marquetti is saying, but also, you talk about opinions and facts. Um, the, the one good, the one thing in this town that we need to do is have retention of employees, and we have been lucky enough to be blessed with a fantastic health director, um, in Daniel Vaschek. And there have been times where, um, Ms. Duffy has overstepped, um, his licensing authority, among other things. And that is not where my beliefs are aligned, and for Counselor Marquetti's reason, and that reason, I will not be supported this tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I will have to say that some of the mental health things that, since I've been on the board that have been addressed are actually almost like a onion. There are many layers, and we've been addressing a lot of different things throughout the town that finally, for the first time in the town history, are finally addressing. And I can say for myself, as the, as the person that's getting a lot of these referrals into my business here in town, you know, Ms. Duffy has actually collectively have done numerous hours making sure that people are housed, and making sure that people have all the appropriate settings that they need in order to be, you know, safe in their homes, um, whether it's electrical, whether it's fire hazard, whether it's, you know, so there are many layers that, you know, um, are being addressed. Maybe not in the ways that, you know, we're, we're saying them on the agenda, but many things are being addressed that, you know, do, that, that finally the Board of Health is, that's one of the things, we're not just trash. And it's finally time to start saying, hey, the Board of Health is a little bit more than, and start educating our community as to them not just being like, hey, these are people that just worry about trash. Yeah, we do, but there's also a huge towarding issues within our town that are not being addressed. The living without a home population, that septic, deprecating and urinating all over the town, that's not done. We have many, many layers. And when you talk about mental health, those are the issues that are finally being brought to the table, because we want to make a change for this town.
Ms. Duffy, and then Counselor Shenier.
So I just wanted to know, um, when it was postponed, um, why a reason wasn't given, and when I had to trust that, I'm not sure there was still no reason, but now there is.
Does anyone want to address that?
I could respond as the former chair of that meeting. Um, uh, Counselor Marquetti gave a great reason already at this meeting why that the discussion was not had. Um, you had the opportunity to speak at, at that meeting, and you chose not to, Ms. Duffy, and that was the answer I gave you, um, from the dais when you spoke at the next meeting under Citizens Forum. Again, that was not the proper, um, venue to be doing that, but Counselor Marquetti also offered that night, when he didn't have to, more reasons. Um, and now they're being addressed tonight appropriately, the way Counselor Marquetti said it should be. Um, but I can imagine, just by the art of conversation and communication, that had you spoke at the last Subcommittee meeting, we might have had more discussion on the postponement. Um, because Counselor Marquetti is a human being, he answered that night at the council meeting following. Uh, but there was, I looked for a discussion, I looked in your direction, and there was no discussion. That's all I have to say about that.
Counselor Shenier, and then Counselor Loza.
I brought the tick issue to council. I contacted Counselor Marquetti, Counselor Loza, but I didn't issue, I went to the, he suggested I first go to recreation. I went to recreation, this was, I, it all started on the Saturday opening day. Uh, the kids were playing at Plus Street Field, I mean, Henry Street Field, and at halfway through the game, they stopped the game and picked the ticks off the kids in the field. My grandson went home, and he had like a half a dozen, eight of them removed from inside of his diaper. And my grand, my daughter wants that you never go back to the field again. So they suggested I go see the Board, the, uh, Recreation Director. I went and saw Mike, I gave him a week. Finally, I saw him here at Subcommittee meeting, and said, I forgot to get back to you. Uh, DPW told me they had no funds to be able to do anything. So I turned up, touched with Counselor Marquetti, Counselor Loza, and they went to the manager, the manager got involved, and ultimately, the board, the health director had it sprayed, uh, and it came. So I, I was coming to the next Board of Health meeting to address the concerns of the ticks, and the suggestion that the Board of Health make this a yearly, uh, event of spraying all the fields, playing fields. And I understood the tick problem was a result of, uh, no snow in the winter time, and that it was a infestation. After the spraying done, three days later, they played ball again there, and nobody had ticks. So it worked. So I came to that meeting, and the meeting was canceled. And. And so I couldn't come to the meeting. So then I came to the last meeting, and because I saw that there was going to be a question of tick infestation. I was disappointed in the verbal attack that was going on between the chairperson and the director about why, explanations. The director tried to explain that, what his reason was and why, and it wasn't acceptable to the chairperson. And then the chairperson explained it kind of wasn't acceptable, but I felt, I felt that behavior was uncalled for for a chairperson. I mean, it happens in council, what happens with us in council, people pull this out. So I found that disturbing. I did come to a few board of health meetings over the course of the year, and I was disturbed to find that there was no discussion about trash, mattresses, and blight. And I complained about, to Mr. Pelletier when he was here, I complained about Ash, I think it's called Ash Street, about that, the blight, the trash all over town, the mattresses. I complained on a regular basis, and nothing was done. And all that, what I was told was, geez, you know, if we start cleaning up these properties, we're going to have to lean, and it's going to cost the town taxpayers money. Do you want to spend taxpayers' money? But it was disturbing to see that there was no trash discussion at regular meetings. And I did ask some members of the board of health, and I was told that the chairperson didn't want to have trash put on the agenda. So we're here today, and I don't know if that's the truth, if I'm telling the truth, or if it's a misinterpretation of what should be said by the agenda. But I know the actions at the last meeting was really uncalled for for somebody that is, and it ended in, I like, but...
Councilor Loza, and then Ms. Duffy?
The way you're on the mental health, you're absolutely right, hit her on the head. I agree with you a hundred percent. The portion of the mental health that moves into trash are the homeless. They're not Southridge residents, they're Worcester migrants, they come into, from Worcester. And they are, you know, they're just new people, new town. And they come in on a WITA, you got their pillows, they're blanked, they walk right off, I've seen it myself. When I go into my P O box. The mental health is paramount in Southridge right now. Driving down the street, I see a gentleman banging the dead against the, they call the police to get somebody to save the guy. And they said, well, we'll put him to Harrington, and then, you know, we follow the proper procedures. The portion of the puzzle that no one's seeing here, the, the Ash Street that he's talking about, Ash Street, when he, when he brought it up, I was under a different direction. Nothing was ever done about it, and trash was knocked down and poured, when I talk about trash. I'm not talking about trash pickup. What I'm talking about is six dumpsters, thirty odd dumpsters, when rats decide the cats coming out of the garage. Now, Councilor Dow, myself, the health inspector were called out to look at this place. And I could not believe the smell, and enable it, the trash, six, thirty odd dumpsters. Thirty odd dumpsters is half the size of this room. Six of them pulled off that property. It was unbelievable. The homeless were getting into these buildings, damaging the buildings, deprecating, and, and so all of a sudden, this Danny guy, I don't know who Danny was at the time, I got to meet the health inspector through this one incident, and then I worked with him on a tick incident. And I got to tell you, we've got a good gentleman there that made that problem disappear. Found out, wore the property, which had a management company in charge. Had it cleaned up, the exterior, so the whole rest of the neighborhood doesn't have to put up with it. His doctor's office next door to it has the same problem. He took care of that one. And now, part of my administration this upcoming year is to deal with three pages of blight. Now, I don't know why the board of health comes to education and services. I always thought it should have went to protections of persons of property, where the other inspectors go. So it, it's netted where the homeless, the blight, it's all connected. We have three pages of lots that we've gone building down. We pay insurance on all these properties. You know, the taxpayers are paying for these properties. Let's have a bonus auctions, let's have auctions on these places that are viable. Get them on the tax rolls and let them pay the town. We could, we could have a windmill of revenue if we could just get this thing rolling. You know who's getting enrollment? Danny in the health department, Julian in the building department. They joined at the hip with Maritza, and then the town planner was there. It was like they wanted to show, look, this is what's going on. And I told them, I go, in the upcoming year, that blight is the priority. We don't start working on mental health, that's not what I'm saying. Not one is not more important than the other. They're all important. But I think the board of health right now doesn't see it through those lenses, for some reason. We had an issue with a hookabout, which is a state license. I was asked to go to the meeting, I went to the meeting, I watched what went on there. Your health director was the most well-versed person on state law, on tobacco, on how it works. If we want to get rid of tobacco, we got to change the bylaw. We don't go to the board of health and not allow business to open. So everything was done legally, but a particular person on board of health didn't like the tobacco business. I don't like the tobacco business either, I don't go there because I don't smoke. But the board of health's role is multifaceted. And we need to get people on there that are multifaceted, not just one way, one thing. The one thing about what's happening right now is called networking. Some people call it the good old boys. I kind of shrug my shoulders, I'm good at it, the good old boys. But I think that I should network with you, and the manager, and Gus, and Torres, and we're all networked. We were a phone call away from solving a problem. You work at the elderly center, phone call away from solving a problem. That's why I got involved in government in the first place. Not two, two different sides going like this. Let's get together, drop a phone call, make things happen. If you saw how fast Southridge handled that tick issue, you'd be proud. Between the manager, the chairman, Daniels, the vice chairman, myself, and the health agent, it was like boom, 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 and you got done. That's government working at I N. We got to continue to do that. And we need to put people in place to make that happen. Thank you.
Ms. Duffy?
Actually, I just want to point out that I believe on the last two or three agendas, our blights, I put a push for, I wanted to say, hey, what's our top ten? What's our top three? And one of them was the Thomas Street, and the other one was Break Row. And we kept getting hit and stalling, and I kept pushing that, so that's another thing. And also, we were talking about, we had a presentation at the library for, to help our citizens with, you know, getting resources for housing and things like that. So that's another thing. And also, you know, I find it odd that it seems like Danny Loza seems to get a lot of support when in reality, he's actually not compliant with the law. You know, when it comes to, you know, when we're talking about the tick incident. You know, according to section thirty, I believe it's chapter one eleven, he has two days to report his actions to the board for its approval. We weren't even at the point of talking about, hey, we need a meeting and whatnot, even though we'd be in the rights to do so. We were just trying to say, hey, how come we weren't even informed? He was not compliant with law.
I do think that our board of health isn't just a rubber stamp on our health director. I think that is important. We talk about checks and balances all the time in town council. And so there is a checks and balances. The board of health is required to review things that the health inspector does, to question, right, using the, you know, mass general laws. We may not always like what the board of health is asking questions about. We may not always like our businesses to be put on the spot. I am absolutely one hundred percent pro-business, and I want to make sure that our economic development is stimulated. But we do have rules and regulations for a reason. We all sit at that dais and talk about checks and balances every single week. And this is the checks and balances on our health inspector. That, that's just what it is. We, we're not always going to like it, but there are rules for a reason. And so I am going to support this reappointment. The board of health can decide who the chair is, that's their right as a board. But to, you know, to look away and say, you know, Nicole has, Ms. Duffy has been on the board of health for a long time, she has the institutional knowledge since two thousand eighteen. And I do think that that is important.
One of the things that I also wanted to point out, even as a newer person on the board of health, a lot of the issues that are being spoken about, I mean, just going to be chantastic, like, I don't even know about them, like, the, the board of, like, the, Dan, they don't communicate it to us. You know, we learn about it by third party. Sometimes you see somebody at a grocery store and go say, hey, Chad, you took care of that, you know, you talked about that, I didn't even know anything about the ticks until it was us that were like on the table, like, talking about it. So it really also always comes down to communication. And even though great things are being done, and I'm glad that people are just a phone call away to be able to, you know, to take care of these issues. But if people are going to take the time to volunteer to try to move something up, to be a part of something, then let them be a part of it, you know, let them feel like, hey, yeah, these laws are here for a reason. And they're going to abide to them at all times, not just when it's out of convenience, you know, for certain things, for, and we're all seeing things through third, you know, hearing things through third party. You know, yeah, is it great that, you know, kids can be out there? Yeah, well, let us in on it, you know, that's what the laws are there for, that's what the communication is there for. Let, don't let me be a board of health person, you know, and then find out about it, like, I don't know, three weeks later or two months later, you know, at a meeting. Like, if it's, there's bylaws, and we're new coming into this, then, you know, then tell us, you know, like, these are what these laws are here for. We're going to all abide by them, and, you know, make us feel like we know what the process are, you know. People are coming into these boards soon, there's no type of orientation done, there's no type of, you know, there really is just a lack of direction, and we're really trying the best that we can to collectively provide a service to the town when so little information is being given.
Do we know how many board members there are? Five board members.
It's five seats.
Five seats. We did four tonight. You're on there.
No, we did two tonight.
Two?
Yep. This is the third. Yep.
Gus?
Hey, no, I'm sorry. I'm putting everyone...
That's okay.
And putting the rear tires on that.
Gus?
Sorry, wake up.
Try to put them...
Wake up, go back to sleep.
We'll take her.
Gus?
Yeah, just to kind of, just to make some sense. One of the issues, I think, that she brought up is actually an issue across the board and towards the community. Is that I think there does need to be a better training process for onboarding people onto boards and commissions. I've seen it repeated, not just in the work, but in a whole suite, in the whole suite of issues. I'm not even touching on the whole issue of what she was saying, Nicole was saying. I mean, just in general, what the laws are for all of these boards that they're, that they're enforcing, that they're following, all of these. A lot of people, I've seen people on boards and commissions, unfortunately, I've recommended some, but when they turned out to be completely done, I mean, they didn't know what they were doing. And that we can't, our town really cannot afford to have people on some of these boards because we're not able to do it. I'm, I'm, I just mean that in a general sense, I'm not referring to anybody, anybody specifically that we're talking about. It's in the caption.
Further, Councilor Marquette?
One question. The lady Paige, did she, she said she mailed her resignation letter in. Has it been received by the clerk yet?
Yes, I got an email from Hannah.
Because we had an issue with another member that resigned, that didn't send a letter in, so there was no position.
He always said that he happened to expire, but he didn't communicate.
I just told us to put him on her...
Okay. So it says here, Toni, Will Staley resigned.
Yes, we got that letter.
Paige Zogdow resigned from board of health.
Did they get the letter?
Well, it says Gus will fill her position, so, go ahead.
I got an email at the same time she sent, she mailed the letter to the town clerk. So I believe that the town clerk did get the letter.
So, so we did get the letter?
I believe so, but I didn't talk to the town clerk. But the day she emailed me, we had an email back, and she talked about...
Because the town clerk told me that on the day all, we don't, Fella was waiting for a little while. And he was sitting there, and I went in, and I know he mentioned, Charlie, you know, I don't like volunteers waiting if we, you know, move forward. And they said, the clerk said they wouldn't have, they didn't have a vacancy because they didn't have a letter. And I didn't know if the clerk got the letter, but the clerk got the letter, it's all been there.
All I can say is I know that she said she mailed, at the same time she emailed me, which was over a week ago. We can check, I believe she does. I know that she is, you know, official on her resignation, I presume the letter did get there.
According to this, the, those resignations were, are coinciding with the appointments.
Right. Gus is, and, and Mr. Dado's filling those vacancies. And my recommendation for the chairperson is that she has...
So, Staley is actually... Staley is an actual...
Right.
Sure, in which case, then we need to double check the town clerk to make sure. Because if there's three of us, and if they're all, they're all set for your appointment, if we play Tony and Staley, we have to relax. That, that, we do need to be careful to avoid having, to make sure that we're all, that they're all staffed. So that you don't have a whole bunch of people just disappearing at the same time. There have been issues like that with that.
Well, if I may, this is going to be a recommendation for the full council next week, with the state to confirm. With the town clerk.
Before that.
Because I know that Paige indicated to me she does have the letter.
I'm assuming the board of health is... Is there something that's standing?
Well, we can do that next week, but we'll straighten that out in the meeting.
Any further discussion? Councilor Dow?
Free to chair, power manager. That email should receive, should be included all council, anybody who decides to form a position?
I believe so, but, you know, I think the official resignation is through the town clerk.
But that council should know, the whole, the higher level resigning, the town clerk should...
We should know how many vacancies there are.
I feel it's like certain people get, certain people, certain people that stay out of it, I'm not sure. Should be all council included on any way of the line.
I didn't see who was, I just saw this. Anyone else? Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion is defeated, one to three. Next agenda item. All right, lost my place. Agenda item number seven, review and discuss the town manager's appointment of Nicole Duffy to the board of health for a three-year term effective immediately through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. State ethics and good standing entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval.
Jasmine?
I think I'm going to say something.
Oh.
So, can we move in second this? So move.
Second.
So now you can discuss it again, because it's on here twice out of order.
Okay, discussion.
No, I was just going to make mention that the last time they did the vote, I know that Councilor T's had made motion to put him on, and just a question.
What?
What?
That was during the last GHS meeting. That the motion was on the table, and I don't think anything happened with that.
I think that motion was made to be able to have a discussion on the postponement.
Yeah. If I may, again, since we're referencing, in order to postpone something, you need to motion and second the item in order to bring it forward for a discussion, then you can make a motion to postpone. So, whether councilor Tees said so move, and councilor Marquetti said second, it's so we can proceed to do anything to that agenda item. And then councilor Marquetti made the motion to postpone, and councilor Tees seconded it. And again, there was no discussion. But, that you can't do anything unless you hear the motion first, so that's why I was motioning second. The same way I motioned this one, so you can speak. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted some clarity on that. But I also wanted to make mention, you know, I know, councilor McPhee, I know you had mentioned that, you know, why didn't I bring it up the first time? And that, well, you did answer me during that town council meeting, but the question is that, you know, I think right off, you know, it's just, it's just odd when someone doesn't have any answer why. And then at the other meeting, at the town council meeting, they're asking, there's silence. That, why is it waited to the very end of the meeting? And if it is something as simple as that, why wasn't it just said right then and there?
So, since I was addressed, Madam Chair, if I may, nobody was asked why at the subcommittee meeting that your item was postponed, nobody was asked why at that meeting. I did not ask councilor Marquetti why, you did not ask councilor Marquetti why. Came up to citizens forum, where councillors do not have to respond, and councilor Marquetti chose to respond anyway. And it waited till the end of the meeting to councillors forum to elaborate maybe even more, because that, again, is the appropriate forum. Had somebody asked why at the EHS meeting, as I said about a half hour ago, in the art of communication, I'm sure councilor Marquetti would have said something. I can't speak for him, it's in the past, but nobody asked why, including myself. And, and that is how, that is how everything happened.
Yes, that is correct, that you don't have to answer, but why wouldn't somebody?
He did.
I guess the question is with integrity, is the question.
Councilor Marquetti made the motion, and councilor Marquetti answered.
We're not gonna go back and forth. All right, any further discussion, councilor Marquetti?
We're not gonna go into personalities either. I made a motion to postpone it. My reason for postponing it is because I wanted to look at more information, and that's all. I will agree I should have said something, I will grant her that, my mistake. But, during a postponement, you don't talk about the reasons for not wanting to appoint somebody. You simply say, this is my reason for postponing it. My reason for postponing it is because I wanted to look at more information about the Board of Health, the way it was run, I just wanted more information, that's all. I will grant her that I should have probably said why I postponed it. I won't argue with her there on that point.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the appointment? All those opposed? Motion fails, one to three. Item number eight, review and discuss the proposed plan from Dave's Past Control to provide quarterly rodent services at the community center for five hundred and fifty dollars for the year with unlimited free callbacks. Entertain a motion for town council to accept this plan and allow the town manager to sign related documentation.
Third.
Ah, I just want to say a real quick that I think, I think this is something very important, to be honest with you, coming on board, I was surprised it already wasn't something that was happening. It's a very large building, it's a very old building, a lot of cracks and holes and things that we're planning on hopefully fixing very soon. There's a kitchen in there, there's food coming in and out of there every day, you have different people going in and out of there every day, and I think especially, I think most of you realize last fall was an absolutely disgusting year for pests. It was absolutely awful, the mice were, even with plans like this in motion, there were still issues in some places. So I think it's a very important thing to do, and like they said, they'll come out quarterly, and then they're on call whenever we need, if there happens to be an issue. But I think with the amount of people that are going in and out of that building, and the fact that it's a community building, that it needs to stay, be stayed on top of.
Thank you. Any further discussion, councilor Marquetti?
Thank you, it's for you. So now, this is an issue that I do think should have gone to the Board of Health, so I'm wondering why it wasn't brought up. And this is where I do agree with Ms. Duffy, that Daniel Wasuik should be bringing these issues to the Board of Health going forward, and want to make sure that he is bringing these issues.
Gus?
I was curious, is this something we're often seeing? Because several years ago, I was doing this, and I would that, remember, every time. But I don't particularly, I don't personally recall seeing any issue with Rose.
My turn. Yeah, so, yes, it is, so, it actually, this inspection here, it was, it was done by Dave's Past Control, and it was on the word of the Board of Health, they did an inspection a couple months ago. I wasn't, yeah, I literally just started two weeks ago. So, I wasn't here for this inspection. So, based on the recommendation of the Board of Health, Maritza, if I'm not mistaken, she, due to what she found, she made referrals, talked to all these people, have them come in here, they set up some traps, they did what they had to do. And this was based on their recommendation that we go out, that they come quarterly. And from what I do know, it hasn't been a problem in the past. Like I said, this past year has been an awful year for rodents, like, everywhere. Like, I, I just came from Bay Path, I ran cafeteria up there for the last nine years, and never have I seen, and that's, they came monthly to Bay Path. And never have I, and we were still calling them like every couple of weeks, like, I, you know, and I, and it was just an awful, awful year for it, and I think, you know, with moving some stuff, I mean, my first three days there, I spent cleaning, and I was still finding some, some stuff, so I think it is very important.
I, I, Maritza is just not very well.
Yes, she is.
Counselor Wasuik?
Maritza's the inspector of the kitchens in the town of Southridge. She goes to all the businesses, I mean, she shut down Magos when she walked in there. She is as strict as they come and hard as they come, okay? I know she even, she inspects one of my businesses, and I told her, her job is paramount. People eat out of the hands of people, and they're in these businesses. So for her to be tough, you want her to be tough, because in these kitchens, you know, things slide by. This is another, I, another, I think, a good situation, where Maritza goes in, does an inspection, writes up her, what I call the honey-do list or the hit list, and then they'll give you it to the proprietor or to the manager. In this case here, I want to welcome you aboard, and I'm glad that you're coming forward on the recommendation, and I'm sure that the council will support her. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, to you. I think we have a lot of lack of rats, because, I don't know, I don't call it rats, because they're, hey, oh, we ain't working on, so they're running away after they're.
Counselor Marquetti?
I just want to respond, I'm glad that Maritza went in there, I don't have any problem with Maritza, but she is the health inspector, and she, they really need to bring these things to the Board of Health. That's all, that's all I'm saying, I'm glad she did it, don't worry.
And again, I disagree with that, she's an agent on the Board of Health.
She still needs to be to the Board of Health.
And she doesn't bring everything that she, everything that she, all her work doesn't go to the Board of Health. She's inspect, she closes restaurants down, she don't report like that to the Board of Health.
Absolutely.
You wouldn't have enough work, if there's a problem where the Board of Health needs to get involved, then they go to the Board of Health, but for everyday stuff, this is a preventative measure. You know, I, I, maybe they should come to my house, because I dealt with twenty-four mice at my house over the course of this past winter. Twenty-four. So, maybe we can get them to come to my house.
Ms. Duffy, and then counsel.
Yeah, I suppose to speak to that, I believe the way that works is that when Maritza has that information, she lets Daniel know, and then at that point, he's supposed to communicate with us, so again, there's another communication.
Yeah. We'll work on it.
She does it normally, the Board of Health sets up the criteria, the state health code sets up the criteria of guaranteeing you an annual kitchen inspection. Depending on what they find in that inspection, that's what drives Maritza, the state law, forbid the laws that are made by the Board of Health. And then they make the laws, if they eliminate tobacco, you can't have tobacco in bars and restaurants. Done, the law is there, if there's a violation, you go there. And you tell the people at the Board of Health, we got a violation, I think we've had one on the school down on Hamilton Street, that you have to take action. Now, those are the kind of things that we need a good line of communication, and I agree, notification, that's when there's a problem. But my annual, they're gonna go to the Board of Health and say, well, they went into lawville, and we're very clean, don't waste the Board of Health's time, and Maritza's time. When there's an issue, it needs to be worked on. That's what I keep calling about, the phone call away. You know, let's get things working together, and yeah, the health agent needs to keep the Board of Health informed, but there are some things that it's basically non-reportable, because it's state law. You know, just, they do it. Thank you.
Gus?
If I can add, I, I really understand, although I think in this case, I think there's a little bit, to convince a little bit because of the fact that it's a town building.
Doesn't matter, state law supersedes kitchens.
No, I'm not disagreeing with the self, state law supersedes kitchens, we agree with that. I think it's just a matter of informing, because it is a town, a town facility. You know, quite frankly, something like that should drive the council as well. Council should have known that that was an issue in town building. I don't think anybody, none of us have.
Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Chair, to you. You know, yes, they do have a job to do the Board of Health, but let's stop putting the finger on them on everything. The person running the senior center is supposed to be calm and talk to the chair, put energy on the, cut the money like she's doing right now. Melissa's job is to inspect, if any, I, I believe when she go there, there's no mice running around, how'd she know? You know, she do the inspection, look for mold, look for debris stuff, look for something she can see at that moment. And then if she sees something, we'll fail it, and then will she, she give time, the person running the establishment to fix it correctly, and she go back and inspect it. I don't, I don't believe we should put all the blame on that person, I think she doing a great job, she worked hard, and she going beyond her job, I think she's doing amazing job. Let's stop putting the finger on different people, what I think the person was running the senior center, she should be came up forward, and like what they did right now, apply for money to do the pet control.
Anyone else? Jasmine, did you have something?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, going back to, like, what we were just saying, communication, I mean, we've had, we've had, just right now, we've had three different sets of lack of communication, you know, and, I mean, even within our own forum, you know, and I think that that just really goes to show, you know, like, where we're at. And I don't think, obviously, I'm not gonna report to, you know, you know, every, every little bit of my work, you know, when I come in front of y'all, but you're talking about an infestation that could be domino effecting for them getting into trash and all this other stuff, then, you know, you just bring it up, and we figure out how it is that we can fix it, you know, amongst ourselves, so that it doesn't become a bigger issue. But it really just stems down to communication, and it's been pretty evident here that, you know, in different parts of what we're all doing, that that's something that, you know, is a big hindrance here, so.
Anyone else?
I know this is a little bit off topic, but I would agree with you, where they have what they call hall of boards and commissions. Where representatives of each of, each of these board and committees all get together at least like quarterly every, every six months or whatever, and just run and just throw around ideas of what they're, what they're working on, the kinds of issues that are happening, and I think that will make a big difference. That's kind of off, we're getting way off.
Anything else on the items? On the agenda items? Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed?
First, yes.
Yes.
Coming from all.
Next agenda, adjournment?
So move.
I know, I have two couples sitting.
All those in favor? Opposed?